Good evening, everybody. Oh, sorry. Just get on, that's it, I think. Right. Thank you, everyone. Good evening. Welcome to the April meeting, and this is my last business meeting of the year. I don't know where that year has gone, but it's gone. So, apologies for absence.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We've had apologies from councillors Corbett, Franks, Brenton, David Slesinger and Jackie Slesinger.
Thank you. Any further apologies? John Stoker-Walker. We've got Franks, I don't think we've got Tinnian. Okay. Ahad. Anymore for Anymore? No? Great. Minutes. Does council agree the minutes of the meeting held on the 7th of March? Agreed. Any matters arising? No? Official notices. On behalf of the council, I would like to pay tribute to Archie Sebeko, the equal rights campaigner who died recently, aged 90. Archie was a trade union organizer in South Africa for the African National Congress, the ANC, who went on to become a leading figure in the fight against apartheid and once shared a cell with Nelson Mandela. We are also further saddened to hear of the death of Winnie Mandela a few days ago. As this is the last business meeting of city council before the local elections on 3rd of May, can I say a big thank you to all of those members who are standing down at this election and thank them for their service over the recent years? Thank you. Corbett? Yes? Wendy?
I don't object, but I did feel in view of the events that we held last year to commemorate the visit of Martin Luther King to the city 50 years ago, it's important for council also to commemorate the 50th anniversary of his assassination. I'm sure Martin Luther King was an inspirational figure to all of us and it's really amazing what he achieved in such a short lifetime. So I just really wanted to have it on the record that we commemorated the anniversary.
Thank you very much, councillor Taylor, for reminding us of that. Yes, we'll do that. Thank you. Correspondence. We haven't any this month. Petitions. We have received one petition which has more than 2,500 signatures. This size petition is normally the subject of a time-limited debated council. I will now call on Rachel Locke to present the petition regarding Save Newcastle Wildlife. Rachel?
Thank you for taking the time to consider our petition, which has been signed by more than 3,000 people. We welcome the interest of those from outside Newcastle who have signed the petition, those who once lived in the city or perhaps aspire to live in the city, those who recognize the gravity of this issue. Members may recall we presented a similar petition in November, during which we called for a commitment to conserve and enhance biodiversity in Newcastle. A response from the cabinet member for investment and growth rather than the cabinet member for the environment was disappointing. We were assured the council takes its responsibilities for protecting the city's natural habitat very seriously, but that because the responsibility for green infrastructure and biodiversity cuts across different directorates, a cabinet member for biodiversity would not be proposed. We welcomed the resolution to prioritize a green infrastructure delivery plan, but more must be done. A UN-backed study has warned the destruction of nature is as dangerous as climate change. We cannot allow for the further destruction of nature in our city. Newcastle was the first city in England to install a pollution-busting moss tree, harnessing the power of nature to solve one of the city's most pressing issues: air pollution. Wouldn't it be wonderful to see more real trees doing what they do best: purifying our air, supporting wildlife, stopping soil erosion, reducing flood risk and providing an aesthetically pleasing environment for people to live and work in? In 2016, Newcastle City Council committed to expand its blue-green infrastructure. The premise was to reduce flooding, but in doing so, it was recognized that such infrastructure could make a significant positive contribution to physical and mental health and well-being, biodiversity, carbon emissions, culture, quality of life and the economy. We would like to see more evidence of this commitment. Seventy-five percent of Earth's land areas are now degraded. We need to make fundamental changes to avoid weakening our natural defenses and eroding the biodiversity upon which we all depend. If the council is serious about transforming this city into an international visitor destination, it must work with nature to achieve this. Biodiversity and green infrastructure go hand in hand. Both have environmental, economic and social benefits and offer a means of tackling some of the biggest challenges facing our planet. We need a comprehensive network of green infrastructure in Newcastle, but we need this to be properly managed, maintained and enhanced as a priority within the council's decision-making body. Biodiversity does not have to be so far removed from towns and cities. Encouraging nature in urban environments is just as much a social and economic issue as a conservation one. By providing habitats for wildlife to thrive, we can unlock the potential of our city to provide tangible benefits for people and for wildlife. As a public authority in England, Newcastle City Council has a duty to conserve biodiversity. Planning decisions and the design choices of construction companies and developers must weave into the urban fabric space for nature and in so doing, Newcastle could become a world leader in conserving biodiversity. Health and well-being and air quality are already on the council's agenda. It is time biodiversity was too. Without biodiversity, there is no future for humanity. The air we breathe, the water we drink and the food we eat all depend on it. We are therefore calling on you to safeguard our future and to commit to creating a cabinet role for biodiversity. Thank you very much.
I now call on the leader of council, councillor Forbes, to respond to the petition.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and I'd like to thank Rachel for the petition and for her address this evening. I want to comment on a couple of aspects of this. Firstly, the policy context in which biodiversity is safeguarded by the council. We have a core strategy and urban core plan which sets out very clearly our green thread which promotes the protection and enhancement of the green infrastructure network and natural environment of the city. And as part of the core strategy, we have made commitments to protect and enhance green infrastructure, protect and enhance trees and landscaping, protect and enhance biodiversity and habitats and protect open space and the provision of open space. And the Development and Allocations Plan, which is currently out for public consultation, sets out more detail of the green thread of each of those issues. And I can confirm to council tonight that a biodiversity action plan will be published later this summer for consideration in the city. And the... People should be in no doubt that we take these issues seriously. The nature of the petition is about political leadership for it. And there are a couple of observations I would make. Firstly, I would hope that by me as leader of the council responding to this petition, people can be assured that we do take this very seriously and we do listen very carefully to the points that are made. We have sought, in the time that I've been leader of the council, to balance the issues of finding new land for new homes and finding land for industrial use and economic benefit with our responsibilities to the environment. And we have sought to do so wherever possible. But protecting the environment doesn't mean preserving it exactly as it is. It means making sure that it's accessible, that people can enjoy it and that people can move freely around it, which is why we're investing very significantly in new cycling infrastructure in the city. And in relation to the point around calling for a specific cabinet member for biodiversity, there is an issue with this that I would simply report, which is that the number of cabinet members that can be appointed is limited by law to 10. And so to appoint a cabinet member with specific responsibility for biodiversity would mean taking away responsibilities from another cabinet member. It would also, in my view, risk the danger that biodiversity was simply an issue in one part of the council, whereas maintaining it as a whole cabinet responsibility means that we ensure that it is the responsibility of all cabinet members in all of their roles, whichever bit of the council they work within. So I'd like to propose, Lord Mayor, a motion in relation to this petition, which is that council receives the petition and resolves that biodiversity remains the collective responsibility of cabinet rather than a named cabinet member. Thank you.
Councillor McCarthy?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'll second the leader's proposal and make a couple of observations, Lord Mayor. Firstly, we operate as one council, so an issue like biodiversity is considered in every single decision that we make. It needs to be as part of our one-council approach to this. And, Lord Mayor, secondly, the petition that is before us tonight is indeed signed by a significant number of people, but less than a tenth of them actually reside in the city. So whilst I hear what the petitioner was saying in relation to the importance of the issue, we are not demeaning that. But I do think to present us with a petition of 3,000 names of international significance, that needs to be recognized when we speak about these important issues too. So, Lord Mayor, I second the proposal.
Okay, thank you. Could I call on councillor Kane?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you for the address and the petition. I represent an inner-city ward, as many of you know, and the biodiversity we have is quite remarkable. We have otters, we have deer, we have foxes, we have all kinds of bird life as well, including I saw a cormorant swimming very quickly down the Ouzberne in the torrent today. And I'd like to thank in particular Save Newcastle Wildlife for their help in preserving our internationally-renowned kittiwake colony on the Tyne Bridge under threat from third parties who wanted the birds off the bridge. Because that kind of biodiversity in an urban setting is very dear to my heart. I was also very taken with the mention of blue-green infrastructure. I was privileged enough to see a lot of this infrastructure in practice in Portland, Oregon a couple of years ago, where, for example, every new development has to manage stormwater on-site. So as a result, you get green roofs and all these wonderful little green gardens scattered around the city. Where I do think we've missed a trick, and I did throw this into the system and I hope it can still be integrated where possible, is in the Cycle City Ambition Fund project. There is an opportunity when we're digging up loads of curbs around the city to integrate some of that blue-green infrastructure in there so we can have soakaways, as we've seen in Portland. I know the officer who now left the council knows all about the Portland experience and should be able to bring that forward. In terms of responsibility, I do worry with this idea of it being everybody's responsibility because in my experience if something is everybody's responsibility, it ends up with nobody's responsibility. We had this to a certain degree with the 100% clean energy program, which was launched with great fanfare a couple of years ago. But the plan that cabinet agreed to receive is a year overdue. And I think this shows what happens if you take away the high-level commitment that the previous administration, previous Liberal Democrat administration, had on environment sustainability. It was one of our top-level issues and make it a subsidiary green thread running through everywhere. So maybe not a cabinet member purely for biodiversity, but there should be one. And I've said this since 2011, there should be one for environment and sustainability. And at the very least, somebody should have designated responsibility for biodiversity. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Kane. Councillor Ashby?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I add my thanks to those who brought forward this petition, although I also expressed some disappointment that it's not been possible to identify more local people who signed it. While it's gratifying when the world takes an interest in Newcastle's future, local people should have the strongest voice. The petition raises important issues of principle. With green fields and red squirrels, once they're gone, they're gone. Are we certain that this destruction is needed and is needed now and has to be there? Although the site was considered as part of the one-core strategy, significant doubts have since been raised about the pace of the city's future housing needs. And some of those executive homes, apparently needed over the rest of this decade, may well be filled by the current rush of house building in North Tyne Side, just a few metres away from the city's boundaries, as well as the next phase of the Great Park, which is in the planning permission process. How informed are considerations in the light of potential noise misery as a result of the new airport noise contour map? Will this development impact upon the airport's willingness to expand both directly and via ancillary projects? And in the light of ever-changing security threats, how sensible is it to build directly under the flight path? I think we should also be considering more broadly what sort of housing is needed, when and where. Surely in the short term, we need more affordable housing closer to the city centre with less dependence on cars and more access to the existing infrastructure of life. The recent house building north of Newcastle has been unfortunate, to put it mildly. The cabinet is no doubt aware that most plans for adoption of roads in my ward have been constantly deferred. We can quite understand that the council won't take over areas which are not up to standard, but builders seem to show little interest in getting them up to scratch. As a result, owners are finding it more difficult to sell their homes in the face of continued uncertainty. Would it not be fair that any new scheme like Havana must not leave buyers there in limbo too?
Thank you, councillor Ashby. Councillor Forbes now has the right to reply.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and just a few points in summing up the debate. Firstly, there has been extensive work done in terms of understanding the range and nature of environmental sites in the city and our responsibility in order to preserve and protect them. So for example, the city has five sites of special scientific interest, six local nature reserves, 26 local wildlife sites and 33 sites of local conservation interest. And councillor Kane referred to the abundance of wildlife in certain parts of the city. And that surely is something to celebrate and promote. It is not under attack, it is not under threat. It's something that we're very proud of. It's something that makes this city a beautiful place to live and a beautiful place to visit. The question that this petition is about is about whether or not we should create a specific cabinet role for biodiversity. And I've explained the limitations that there are on the size of the cabinet and the range of cabinet responsibilities that we have to cover in the council's governance processes. But what I can give an assurance is that I will look again at the Know Your Cabinet Guide, which I publish every year when the cabinet is appointed, which sets out in detail the areas of cabinet responsibility. And I will make sure that lead responsibilities for biodiversity are very clearly set out in there so that nobody should be in any doubt who is the person with lead responsibility within the cabinet which maintains overall responsibility for biodiversity for the city and which has ensured that it's reflected in all of the plans and documents which I talked about earlier. So, Lord Mayor, I hope that we can continue to make sure that everybody understands the importance of this. I'm very grateful for people for bringing this petition for us to debate. And I know that we are all absolutely committed to ensuring that the green spaces and the wildlife of our city are protected and preserved. But we also ensure that the residents of the city live and work alongside and are able to enjoy this wildlife and see it and enjoy it and feel that it's part of their city too. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Forbes. Does council agree, councillor Forbes' proposal? Thank you very much. We have no public question time, no public questions this month. The next item is the pay policy statement. And I would call on councillor Allison to move the report, seconded by councillor Powers. Councillor Allison?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I mean, this is a standard report, I believe, that has to go through Constitutional Committee on an annual basis. It was probably my first and maybe my last meeting as chair of Constitutional Committee. Depends on what happens after May the 3rd. A couple of things I'd like to pick out on is the commitment that Newcastle's got the living wage. I think we're probably one of the few councils in the country that have really pushed the Newcastle living wage, which is way in excess of the actual living wage, which is nationally agreed. And we're also pushing now to get the foundation living wage. But I think one of the most significant things within the report is the gender pay gap. It's really significant to see the upper quartile, in the top quartile in Newcastle, that female members of staff are paid way in excess of male staff. And I think that's reflected in the way that Newcastle have moved on, where you've got a lot of senior staff now who are females and in very, very important positions within the council. And I think it's really important that we've done that. I think when you compare some of that with the lower quartile, which are mainly female staff in lower income bands, i.e. cleaners in schools, school and meals staff, etc., I think that's how that figure is so low. But it just shows how far the city has come over the last few years to really push this on, to make sure that we do treat people equally, that people are doing the same, they're paid the same rate of pay and are treated equally. And I think it's very important that we've done that. I just want to make one further comment. Councillor Donnelly did raise at the last meeting about, the budget meeting, about the chief executive's pay. Can I just point out, it's very unfair to point at one individual member of staff. They may be the chief executive, but they are a member of staff of this council. And the chief executive's salary is reviewed on an annual basis by the leader, deputy leader and the leader of the opposition. It wasn't actually a pay rise, it was actually moved up on the scales that are there for chief officers because of the performance of that certain member of staff. And I think to point the finger at certain individuals is completely utterly wrong. And I can ask councillor Donnelly again while I'm on my feet, has he yet apologized to the office of the Lord Mayor? I don't believe he has, but he should do. It's absolutely shocking what that man's done. So I move the report, Lord Mayor, and hope you can pick up any questions.
Thank you. Councillor Powers?
Seconding the report, Lord Mayor.
Okay, thank you. At the moment, I have two speakers. Councillor Faulkner?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And George, thank you for presenting the report. There were really two points I wanted to raise that relate to the report, one of which I did mention at Constitutional Committee. And that is that I think we all welcome the statutory focus now on the gender pay gap. And we understand why the figures are as they are in Newcastle, but it's good that it's better than elsewhere. And it's even a topic that's reached the Prime Minister's attention now amazingly. But I did raise the issue of minority ethnic employees of the council. And we did used to report on this and we were aware at one time, not too many years ago, that they tended to be clustered in not just lower grades but in temporary posts and in part-time posts. And I just wondered if it were possible for us to turn the focus again on that and have some kind of report to understand that we are speaking the language of equality and practicing equality in all respects. The second issue is the one you raised about the living wage. And I think we all share the pleasure that the council has been a trailblazer in this area. But I do remember that one of the things that was said at the time when we launched the Newcastle Living Wage was that we would become an advocate throughout the city. We would encourage other employers. And I haven't really seen any evidence or any presentation, any information about whether that is a success in terms of the wider city. We had one or two employers who at the launch, four, five years ago now, stood up and said they would walk the walk. But I'm not really sure what's happened since. And again, it might be of interest to all members of the council at some point in the future to be able to find out about that. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Faulkner? Councillor Ashby?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The information on pay gaps is a direct result of the Liberal Democrats' influence in the coalition government. As the Small Business Act 2015, if you really want to know, although it sounds like you don't, as the group office always sees the bad, will they for once acknowledge the good we did to? Clearly not. Companies have had a full year to report on their gender pay gap, yet unlike Newcastle City Council, more than 1,200 companies have reported in the past 24 hours. What are they ashamed of and what are they doing, if anything, to exploit extortion? I must admit, however, this process is a very blunt instrument at the moment. It's a start, not an end. I look forward to data being revised in future so we can see if there are differences in comparable groups. For instance, are there any differences between male and female graduates in the first five years of their careers, before the rest of their lives kick in? There are now significant opportunities for all. The highest-paid executive working in Newcastle City Council is a woman. The leader and deputy leader of the Liberal Democrats and the deputy leader of the Labour Group are female. Our chair this evening might be called the Lord Mayor, but she's in fact a lady. Has have been the speaker of both Houses of Parliament. The country's prime minister, head of judiciary and head of state are all women. There is clearly no glass ceiling except in the individual ambition. This is the next frontier. #YesYouCan.
Councillor Donnelly?
Thank you. Thank you, Lord Mayor. The trade unions have been consulted and briefed about the contents. That's what it says on 5.2. However, this is factually incorrect. In that unison was briefed on the fair pay policy document on the day of the Constitutional Committee meeting. But they were not asked for their comments at the meeting or prior to that meeting. So the word consultation is not correct. It should therefore read, "The trade unions have been briefed about the contents." Will councillor Allison explain for the benefit of staff and the public as to why it is deemed fair to offer the chief executive a 4.5% increase, senior staff 3% and everybody else 2%? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
All speakers? Can... yes?
Just a point of information. I understand councillor Donnelly was asked to apologize to the Lord Mayor. This has not happened. Why is he still being allowed to speak in council? It's just inappropriate.
Okay. There's nothing to prevent councillor Donnelly speaking at council. Even though he hasn't apologized to the office of the Lord Mayor. Councillor Powers, did you reserve the right to speak? No, you didn't. Councillor Allison?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I mean, David Faulkner is quite right. We did, that question was raised about ethnicity. Get my words tied up. And we did promise to bring something back on that. I think councillor McCarthy actually said that when we changed the pay rule to electronic, there was a questionnaire that were trying to identify members of staff who were from different ethnic races, etc., etc. And we're promised that we're going to try and pull some more figures out to bring that back. And on the other issue, I honestly can't answer that, David, about other companies in the city. But I'm sure we can try and find out if other companies have reached on the living wage. I hope they have, on the Newcastle living wage, because it is important. It's a big gap, it's a pounding hour, more or less, you know the difference. It's a huge amount of money for somebody on such low income that would should do that. And councillor Ashby as well, I just give up. I don't know what to say. And as for councillor Donnelly, I mean, I think at the budget meeting last month, it was explained to him then how it happened. I explained in my opening remarks. It's not a pay rise as such. On an annual basis, the chief executive's office, whoever it may be, there is a review of the role of the chief executive. And if they're not performing, I assume the salary scale will be lowered. If they are performing well, it goes up. It's reflected purely on performance of that individual person in that role. And it's agreed at a panel with the leader, the deputy leader and the leader of the opposition, who due diligence to that, understood the issues and then approved and recommended that the chief executive be moved up to that scale. I cannot explain it anymore, I don't think anybody can. That is a fact, that's how it's done. It doesn't matter whether we're in opposition or you're over there. I just wish you would actually take some responsibility in your roles at council and act within the good interests of this city, not just your own ward, because you don't do that. Most of us do take collective responsibility and work to try and improve. Most of us do take collective responsibility and work to try and improve the city of our people, not just our own wards, that's why we're here. You know, but you don't do that. And again, you still haven't apologised, it's not to the person that sits in that chair, it's the office of that Lord Mayor, that Lord Mayor's chair, that you need to apologise to for your behaviour nearly a year ago now, and you still haven't done it, disgrace.
Is the report agreed, or do we need, do we require a vote? Agreed? Thank you. We have received two questions marked for written reply. These, with the responses, have been circulated and also displayed in the foyer. Cabinet member reports. We have councillor Strether to give her report, which will be given two separate reports. So we'll start with the first one, which is public health and housing. And I ask on councillor Strether to introduce the report.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This is my third and final annual report on housing. And I have to say, it has been my privilege to have been a cabinet member for housing. I've enjoyed it tremendously, I've learnt a lot, and I've given it my best effort. But I want to thank all the officers that I've worked with over the last three years. Planning, the Fairer Housing Unit, Active Inclusion Newcastle, which deals with income maximisation and homelessness, Cherry Tree View, our homeless accommodation, environmental health offices, and of course, our key partner, Your Homes Newcastle. They're all excellent, and they work tirelessly to help us meet our housing ambitions. And I also would like to thank the voluntary and community sector organisations, who have brought issues to my attention, particularly regarding the housing of asylum seekers. You'll see in the report that it is wide-ranging with much detail, which we will have read, so I'm only going to say a little before questions. The work that we do needs to be seen in the context of making Newcastle a great place to live for all our residents, and I stressed all. It has been a very busy year, we've updated policies and have new programmes, and we do all that in the context of a national housing crisis from which we are not immune. We are still dealing with the implications of the 2016 Housing and Planning Act, and I know I've said it before, but I'm going to say it again, that the 1% rent reduction, resulting in a loss of £29 million over four years to the housing revenue account, has had serious consequences in terms of the money available to upgrade our council properties and to contribute to new builds. The motivation for that, I think, for the government was just to bring down the housing benefit bill, because the benefits to individual tenants has been very small. I think the average is round about 60 pence a week, if I remember rightly. We also have had the threat of the levy, which is still hanging over us, which is money we will have to pay to the Treasury, so that they can subsidise the right-to-buy sales of housing associations. If this is introduced, and it seems to have gone quiet, but if it is introduced, we will have to sell off all our higher-value properties. And already, I've noted, you note in my report, since I became cabinet member, our council housing stock has reduced from 27,000 to 25,000, and that would go down further, and our better council homes in the better areas would have to go. And we've also faced the possibility of introducing fixed-term tenancies. This is somewhat ironic, I mean, we are greatly concerned about insecurity of tenure in the private rented sector. The main cause of homelessness is people not being able to sustain their accommodation in the private rented sector. If we introduce fixed-term tenancies, we might be introducing that risk into the public sector too. We've had last year, a housing white paper in last February, but there was very little detail, and we're still waiting for a green paper, which was promised for 2018. But we've had no concrete proposals to boost house building with affordable rents, and I stress that affordable rent should not be 80% of market rents. We need to make sure that they are social rents, and they're rents that people have the ability to pay. And little is being done by government to give tenants in the private sector enhanced rights regarding homes fit for habitation, security of tenure, or reasonable rent increases. But on a positive note, we in the city are on course to build 19,000 new homes by 2030, but we do need to build more affordable homes for rent. Through successful bidding, we've built more homes for older people, and those with special needs, as you will see in the report. We are bringing empty homes back into use, and I think last year we brought 400 of them back into use. We do an excellent job in preventing homelessness, and we are well placed to implement the Homeless Reduction Act, which came into effect yesterday, where many local authorities are going to struggle, and where I think there will be much litigation. We have the leadership, both at a political and an officer level, to make this happen, and the systems and relationships with partners are all in place to actually meet the requirements of that act. We with YHN have responded quickly and effectively to fire safety following the Grenfell Tower disaster. We've done what we can at this juncture to enhance fire safety measures in tower blocks. We must await the outcome of the Grenfell Inquiry to see what more needs to be done, and whether the government will provide the necessary finance to help us do it. In house building for rent, we are hamstrung by the government-imposed borrowing cap. It should be lifted. The Treasury Committee even says it should be lifted, and said so unanimously. However, we do have, as you've seen in the report, a new innovative annuity leaseback scheme to bring some private investment into housing for rent. So, Lord Mayor, we have much to celebrate, and there's more to do, but ultimately, I want to say, and I'm sure you agree, that housing is not about bricks and mortar, it's about improving the quality of people's lives. So I look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Taylor?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, Jane, for a very good report and for your work as cabinet member. Just a question, you mentioned rough sleeping, and I know we don't have quite the problem that many other cities do, but I'm aware that there seems to be a slight increase, and I've even had one complaint in my own ward, which is almost unheard of, of somebody on Four Lane End, by one of the shops there. Can you just remind us of the process of what we should be doing to, you know, who goes out to talk to people and find them somewhere that they can stay? I know the main problem is mental health, but I just really want to know the process by which we're dealing with this. Thank you.
I think I anticipated a question on rough sleeping, because a lot of people are concerned about this. I think we need to see our response to rough sleeping in the context of the overall work we're doing about preventing homelessness and dealing with people who are in crisis. But it's certainly true, and I've got some facts here, that rough sleeping in the country as a whole has increased over the last seven consecutive years. And a 15% increase nationally over the last year. And just to put the situation in Newcastle into some context, Westminster has the highest number of people sleeping rough, 217, this is an average per night. Brighton was the next, with 178. Outside the South East, Manchester had the highest number of 94. And in Newcastle, we have, it's risen in the last year from six to seven. And over a period of three months, it's been 77 individuals. Now, we know all of these individuals, because we have, working with Changing Lives, we go out every night and make contact with them. Now, a lot of people, we've been trying to help people change their perceptions a bit about rough sleeping, because here in Newcastle, I can't speak for elsewhere, it's not about a lack of housing accommodation. It is a problem of people with very complex needs. And one way that we're trying to address this, as you may know, it's in the report, that we've been awarded with Gateshead, £1.54 million to spend across both local authorities to actually work intensively with those people that are, it's also in a revolving door, rough sleeping, going to crisis accommodation, back into rough sleeping. And to create a, I suppose, almost a cordon sanitaire around them, in actually providing multidisciplinary teams to work with them to address their complex needs, so their mental health, addiction problems, the need to get jobs, or whatever. It is a payment-by-results scheme, I think the jury's out on payment-by我又s, and we won't get the money unless we get the results. It's early days, but we will be getting some findings shortly about how it is going. So we are working intensively, we have been recognised that we've got the infrastructure to do this work, and that's why we've got the extra government money. But it is not a problem of shortage of housing, it is a problem of people with really complex needs. And I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Councillor Huddart?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And thank you, Jane, for a very thorough and comprehensive report. I think we're all glad to see that there is some more money down the pipeline for some more houses. I was pleased to hear Tom Warburton give a report at YHN last week about monies that were being bid for, etc. So that's all good news. And I have sort of three questions for you. And the first one is, do we have a five-year estimate of the types of housing for those people with special needs or elderly, in light of the changes to funding for supported housing? And do we have a forward plan for supportive housing? Is that being developed? That's the first one. Right? The next one relates to something in your report. As the budget for repairs to voids is overspent a bit, and the HRA is under pressure, where will the borrowing come from to underwrite the issue of void repairs? And the third one is, because some high-rises are to be demolished, and we welcome that, some of them are the worst examples of brutalist 60s architecture, are you sure that we're going to be able to replace those lost units with more suitable low-rise properties at affordable rents?
Thank you. Three complex questions. The first one was particularly complex, because it was multifaceted. All I can say about building for special needs, I don't know whether we've got a five-year plan, I do know that there is ongoing assessment about, and working with adult social care, assessment of what we think the needs are for older people and people with other needs, particularly people with learning difficulties. And you know, we've actually built a lot of properties over the last couple of years for them. So that is constantly under review. And we did get that £11.8 million from the Homes England, as it's now called, to build, what was it, 490 or something, new homes. So the planning will be, go, is obviously in line with what the needs assessment is over a longer term. The budget for the HRA is under pressure, and you probably know actually a bit more about it, myself being on the YHN board. Where will the borrowing come from? Well, this is why we're doing the annuity leaseback model, because we're just about to sign the first contracts, they might have even been signed in the last week. If that's successful, and it seems very attractive to private investors to invest in housing, particularly specialist housing for rents, we will have to keep up pressure on government to lift the borrowing cap. We're pretty, as you know, we're pretty near the cap on the housing revenue account now. We haven't got much wriggle room there. And the high rises, this is a difficult decision, you know, people say, why are you knocking buildings down? But you'll know that in some parts of the city, for example Walker, it's difficult to let properties, the standards are not good, it causes void, loss of rent increases. It's some good prime land down there, we can build both private sector and public sector housing on that land. So I am confident that those units will be replaced, and they will be part of the plans we have for house building. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Tarbott?
Sugar. Sugar. Oh, that's sugar, I said. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you to the cabinet member for an excellent report, and thank you to her for all the work that she's done over the past three years. She will be sorely missed. The report identifies significant achievements which have come about despite government policy, some of which we know about, and some of which still seem to be in the ether of uncertainty. We discussed this report at overview and scrutiny, as is appropriate, and asked lots of questions around holding the executive to account and making sure that we were delivering on our promises. However, overview and scrutiny also has a role in identifying and sharing good or best practice, to ensure that learning is shared throughout the authority, and often beyond the authority. So with this in mind, can the cabinet member identify what she considers to be an area of good practice that we can celebrate and share?
Well, that's an interesting question. And I do agree with you, overview and scrutiny, and health scrutiny are not just about being criticising or being critical of reports, it's actually to draw out some of the good things that we do. I think the report shows there are many areas of good practice. And at an officer's level, they will be meeting professionally and with other local authorities, sharing that, and particularly with the Department for, is it Housing Communities and Local Government, as it's now called. I know that there's constant contact with the civil service about what we do in Newcastle, and in many areas, they're intensely interested in what we do. It's a difficult thing to say what I would think, what was about, what I would think was about particularly good practice. I'm very mindful that, I'm very proudish, and I'm sure you are, about all the work we've done around preventing homelessness, and that we have a national reputation, and we have been rewarded for that. We got just under a million pounds to be a trailblazer, to build on what we do. But I'm mindful of the fact that the lead officer for that said to me a couple of weeks ago, that the, a civil servant at Departments of Housing Communities and Local Government asked him, what would you say to any other authority, the one thing they need to have in place in order to achieve what you have achieved in Newcastle? And his answer was political leadership. And I think that actually gives, the fact that we do give strong political leadership across the board, but it gives officers confidence to go out and push at the boundaries, to be innovative, to build the relationships, to build the systems, because they know they've got the politicians behind them. And that's why, that, you know, for example, I chaired the Homelessness Prevention Forum, because I feel I don't have much to contribute. But he thinks my being there is really significant, that I am seen to be actually supporting what the council's doing. So I think, you know, that's really important. And I think as cabinet member, and all cabinet members will do this, in our relationships individually with officers, we are always scrutinising what is going on. We're always asking the difficult questions, not only to understand, make sure that we understand what's going on, but actually that they're on track to deliver the policies. So I think our role is actually to actually give a very clear political steer to our officers about what we want to achieve, even though we are dependent upon them for their expertise, their knowledge, and their hard work to deliver it.
Thank you. Councillor Faulkner?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And thank you, Jane, for the report and for your stewardship of the portfolio, and I do think you will be a hard act to follow. And the report has an enormous number of good things in the narrative. And you touched there on political leadership, and I hope you might recognise that actually that observation might extend to the previous administration, when we set up leases homes, we built the first social council houses for 25 years in the city, and started the work on homelessness, which you, anti-homelessness, which you developed so well. So I think we have a lot in common in our aspirations, and the report tells the story of what the current administration has achieved, particularly in recent times. It does seem a shame to me that, you know, you talked about the cap on local authority borrowing, and it is inequitous, and we could do more, as we proved, but it does go back actually, in one shape or form, through two or three changes of government. You know, this is not just something which relates to the last few years, as does the unresolved issue about council house sales, right-to-buy, and the extent to which local authorities should be able to take all of the income from sales. That also goes back through two or three changes of government, and it's really a shame that we can't resolve these things. But well done on the report. I do want to use the opportunity just to say one thing, to bring to council's attention the potential demise and risks to the Newcastle Tenants and Residents Federation. I don't want to open the issue again about how the council took in-house the independent tenant support, that's water under the bridge now. But I would like council to know that one of the consequences of that was loss of jobs, expensive redundancies, and the unexpected trigger, which has been revealed in recent weeks, of a pension liability of £137,000, which the tenants fed in its current form has no way of meeting and will probably go bust. And I really think this is a shame that this has happened for an organisation that continues to do important work in the city, and many members will know this, George will know this in Biker and one or two other places. in Biker and one or two other places, to support independent tenants. And it would be a shame if all that goes down the tube. So I just ask you if there's anything you can do in the last few weeks of your tenure to help this process resolve more happily than it looks as it would be? And can I just thank the Director of Resources who stepped in to try and buy some time whilst we tried to put some pressure on the pension fund to take a more realistic and fair approach to the whole thing? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I agree with much of what councillor Falcone has said, particularly around issues around the benefit cap, and it does go back across several administrations. And I think that has to be resolved. I think the Tenants and Residents Association Federation, that it is sorry to see that they are in difficulty. I know they did get a large grant after we changed the arrangements around funding them to work with the private sector. I don't feel I'm in a position certainly in this forum to talk about their financial difficulties, and particularly about their pension arrangements. But I do know there's a lot of activity going on in the council to actually try and see what can be done to resolve this issue, and I hope it will be resolved in their interests. Thank you.
We have one more speaker, one more question, sorry. councillor Beecham.
I'd like to invite the cabinet member to comment on three aspects of government policy and their particular impact on the city. The first is the definition of affordability, which is 80% in the rented sector, for example, of what the inflated private rented levels are. The second is the question of space and energy provision in what is new building, which are much the lowest, as I understand it, in Western Europe as a result of decisions, I think, taken by the coalition government, nevertheless certainly continued by the present administration. I'd like her to indicate whether she feels that that is restricting unduly the quality of the provision that we are able to make. And the final question is around the right to buy. Nationally, as I understand it, 40% of properties sold under right to buy now in the hands of private landlords rather than owner occupiers. I don't know what the position is locally, perhaps you could indicate whether we are at that sort of level, or if it's different, how different it is.
councillor Strath.
Thank you, councillor Beecham. Well, I agree with you, affordability, 80% of market prices for sales and also for rents puts many people's aspirations to have a secure home at a price they can afford outside their reach. I just have high hopes that, should we have a Labour government, that there will be changes to that, and that we will have greater assistance to be able to develop more social rents, which I think have been at more around 50% of market rates. I suppose the problem is particularly acute in London and the South East, because those rents are very high, and very few people can afford 80%. But we do know, and I think it's in the report, that we have got a very large number of very low-income families in this city. And I forget the figures now, but there are a very large number with an income of less than £10,000 a year. So if you're talking about 80% of market prices, then it's not acceptable. On this space and energy for new building, I mean, there are presumably the national minimum standards. I have been having discussions, as no doubt others have, Geordie probably has as well, with planning officers about trying to introduce some new space standards in developments. But this has got to go through a consultation. We know that developers will object to this, they will say it affects the affordability of their developments, but we have to think about the future. We have to actually have space standards that are fit for the future, what people expect, and also that they are able to be, to adjust through internal reorganisation as people's needs change. So that if they need a wheelchair or if they lack mobility, they don't have to move out, but that their home can be adapted quite easily with more space, so that the internal structure can be changed. I don't know where that's at, I have had, say, discussions with planning. I thought it was very good proposals that we were going to ask, and I hope that the council will stick to that, insisting that we have higher standards about space. I can't really comment much about energy, but you do know that we have a number of schemes about actually trying to have energy-efficient programmes and to help individuals actually meet their energy bills. But we, I think what is interesting about the public sector, unlike the developers, we have to forward plan, we have to think about demographic change, we have to think about needs in the future. We're developer only interested in the market now, what is the instant return? But so those issues about space and eco-friendly houses are really important. And the last issue on the right to buy, well, I think we really need to continue to lobby that there are further restrictions on the right to buy. It would be hard to take it away completely, but certainly my view would be that new homes, new council homes should have that removed. And some of the specialist housing and older people's housing don't have that right. And it is true, I don't have the figure, I'm afraid, but we could find out what percentage of those that have been bought in the city are actually in the hands of private landlords. But we do know there would be a significant number. And of course, one of the problems we have, and I think councillor Falcone mentioned it, about right to buy, is we're not allowed to keep the capital receipts to reinvest in new housing to replace those that we've sold off. And that is really something that needs to be put right too. So all I can say, I hope there's a change of government, and we can put all these things right.
Does councillor agree to receive the report? We'll now move on to the second half, which is the Public Health annual report. This is an integrated report between the portfolio holder councillor Strathair and the director of Public Health. In accordance with standing order 29b, does councillor agree to allow the director of Public Health to reply to any technical questions? Okay, fine. And now call on councillor Strathair to introduce the report.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This again is my third report on public health, and it's been presented differently this year, as you see. Because there's so much common ground between what I've reported in past years and what the director of Public Health has reported, although his is much more detailed and informed by much more evidence than myself was at my fingertips, we've decided to integrate our two reports. So you'll have an opportunity to question both of us. I want to start by thanking all who have worked, I have worked with, the director of Public Health and his team, but also many offices across the council who are working to make Newcastle a healthy city. I also pay tribute to many in the voluntary community sector who, as I say in my report, have raised issues, offered time and energy to work in partnership with the council. And I also thank my cabinet colleagues who have embraced the Public Health and Healthy City agenda with enthusiasm. Now, it's now clear that we are working to make Newcastle a healthy city. And I'm not talking about badging it and saying we are a healthy city, because clearly we are not, not yet. But rather, we're on a journey to become one. You will see that we are active participants in the WHO Healthy Cities European Network, where we're able to contribute to policy development and learn by being a member. It's not easy to become a healthy city. We still have huge health inequalities across populations and according to social class. How long you live with good health is likely to be determined by where you were born, grew up, and how much money you have. We can see this played out geographically across our city. You're aware of the 12-year gap in life expectancy between the more affluent areas and the disadvantaged areas of Newcastle. So we do have a challenge. In tackling this challenge, I want to emphasise once again, which you do in the report, prevention. But we are constrained by resources available to us. Because we need resources outside the public health budget, we need the resources across the council to put in all these preventative services. We talk a lot in this council about behavioural change, and from a public health perspective, education is not enough, but what is needed is a health-promoting environment. This is why we have embraced the health-in-all policies approach, which I've talked about before, and which cannot be overemphasised. So as I say in my report, our focus is on the provision of such things as work opportunities, good quality housing, green spaces, play streets, and improving air quality and more. Now, every cabinet member refers to funding constraints. This is not political rhetoric, it's reality. You'll see that I draw attention to the reduction in the public health budget in this spending review period, a cut of 14%. I hope that you agree with me that it is no small achievement that the director of Public Health and his team have managed to sustain a coherent and comprehensive public health programme, notwithstanding some tough choices that have had to be made. There are many achievements in this report, and they're more detailed in the director of Public Health report, and you may want to question him about that. I haven't time to discuss those here tonight, but I'm happy to try and answer any questions, knowing that you have read the report. So overall, I feel that we've made good progress this year, and that we're on the right track. But there's a lot more to do, and I look forward to your questions and observation. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much. The first question is councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. A couple of questions. I was very pleased to see the information about play streets, and I was just wondering how many applications have come forward so far, and how you'll try to encourage more residents groups to get involved in play streets, which I think would be really good. The second thing was just really general comments on the report as a whole. There's obviously some very good information coming through, and we've got some really good figures on infant mortality, on breastfeeding, reduction in smoking, reduction in suicide. But there's a block of sort of more intractable problems, high incidence of TB, an increase in drug-related deaths, and the number of children killed and seriously injured remaining high and actually rose. There's a decrease in cervical screening and immunisations, an increase in smoking-related deaths. Obesity seems to be, for children, seems to be a particularly difficult problem to tackle, and the fact that mortality through 175 is still rising. And I know a lot of these problems are really difficult and intractable, but I just wondered if you think there's anything else we could be doing to try and tackle some of these issues?
I'm very pleased we've managed quite quickly to launch the play streets. It was only, I think, last summer when we first had meetings with residents in Jesmond who wanted to start the play streets. And we were very keen from the outset that these shouldn't just be confined to the more affluent areas of the city. So I was pleased that there was a launch, which I wasn't able to go to, a couple of weeks ago in Arthur's Hill, I believe, was it? That I think the leader of the council and cabinet member Arlene Ainsley of Transport and Air Quality went to, which was a successful event. I don't know actually how many applications have come in so far, but we could find that information out for you. But we are very keen to promote it, and we need to work through all our, all ways that we can to connect with communities that might want to have these schemes. Of course, our role is to facilitate these schemes, and we do that by the way in which we regulate them, and providing things such as street cones, traffic cones, to cut on the street. But we can't provide money for these play streets. So it's up to residents locally to be able to deliver them. But I hope it really takes off in a big way, because it's really good that children can get more outside activity in a safe environment. It's good for their health, and I think it's good for their social relationships as well. There are lots of figures in the report, and maybe that the director of Public Health might want to actually draw attention to some of the most significant features there. There are some intractable problems, and all I can say is that we're just plugging away at them. So, for example, things are, it is worrying that we have a 70% higher rate of child accidents on roads in this city compared with the England average. But there's no quick fix to that. At the end of the day, we've got to tackle transport problems, we've got to reduce car usage, speed limits, and lots of other things. But maybe the director of Public Health would might like to say something about those intractable problems, and where we're at in some of the programmes that we are developing to attack them.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, members, for the opportunity to speak. I would echo the comments that you made about some of the progress that's been made, particularly in relation to some of the childhood indicators. I think that the infant mortality figure at 2.7, which is an all-time low for the city, is an extraordinary achievement. And as a former paediatrician before coming into public health, I'm quite delighted about that. I would also point out that the Schools Health Related Behaviour questionnaire trends that we're seeing, and which are illustrated in part in the report, are extremely good. But I do show your worries, I show your worries about childhood obesity, which has begun to tick up. I think that's related to the fact that the numbers of children living in poverty have also started to tick up. You will see that I included the graph of drug-related deaths, and it's a major concern to us. We are looking at whatever additional actions we might take around those in order to try and address those issues. You raised the issue of cervical screening and immunisation. We've been quite concerned about this for some time, and I've raised the question of cervical screening repeatedly, both with the CCG and with NHS England, because of course cervical screening and immunisations are not actually part of the services that we commission or deliver. We have an assurance role in relation to those, but they're governed by what's called the Section 7A agreement between the Department of Health and NHS England. We've recently started to implement a programme to try and reverse that decline in cervical screening, modelled on the successful programme that's been put in place in Middlesbrough. And I hope next year to be able to come back and tell you how that's progressed. Our immunisation figures remain actually pretty good in the North East. Newcastle's are not quite as good as the North East rate, but still better than the national average overall for childhood immunisations. An area that I've been very concerned about is immunisations against influenza, and we still struggle to get those to the levels that I think we need to in order to try and limit the numbers of excess winter deaths that we see. The smoking-related deaths that you comment on, I think what we're still seeing is the residue of damage that's been done over a very long period of time, as you'll be all too familiar with. And at the same time, we're seeing a fall in the prevalence of smoking. So we're actually at a gain, probably at a low for a century, I guess, in smoking in Newcastle and adults overall, and we're seeing a more rapid fall in smoking amongst children, which I think is very encouraging. The one thing I am bothered about is that, in relation to that, I guess, is that the reversal that we've seen in smoking at the time of delivery over the last year or two, since the end of the baby-clear project that we had run very successfully in the region. And I fear that there's been, since the end of that project, there's been a little taking the eye off the ball in terms of the emphasis within the NHS. I hope that's going to be dealt with through the maternity action that's being taken through the NHS at the moment. I think that covers all of the areas that you picked up on.
Thank you. councillor Avery.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. So I know that you, well, shadow concern that I have, because we've worked on this issue of the closure of a GP practice that's between our two wards. I was just wondering, obviously it falls within purview of the NHS amount without that of yours, what impact do you think the increasing difficulty that people have in accessing primary care is going to have on our preventative care efforts? Not only with the closure of Pontyland Road practice, but the potential closure of one in Elzig, and the, what I'm sure all members will have experienced firsthand, the increasing difficulty in just basically accessing any appointment with a primary care physician, and the difficulty therefore that poses in people accessing preventative care and those sorts of things. If you could comment on what sort of impact you think it's going to have on our efforts?
Well, as councillor Avery knows, because he was part of the group that made representation to the CCG when they made these decisions around the primary care practices on Pontyland Road and in the West End, the Granger practice, and in Scottswood. I'm hoping that the CCG will be monitoring the impact of this, because the first thing to note is that these practices are all in deprived areas. So people who have difficulty sometimes in accessing services through lack of transport or other problems, or the money's to get on a bus to travel further, will have difficulty in finding a GP, and they won't get much help in doing that. I hope that the CCG will be monitoring it. We've been very concerned about this, and we're also very concerned, and we keep making representation, that the local authority doesn't seem to have any say about where these practices are being located in our communities. And it was no coincidence that they were placed there in the first place, they were placed there because we knew there was a very needy population, and they needed good access. So a lot of people are going to have to, will be
So a lot of people are going to have to, will be, will have to find new, new practices. I think we're going to have to watch it very closely and the Director of Public Health may have some views about this, but we have got to watch this very carefully because it could happen elsewhere in the city. It won't happen in the leafy areas of Jesmond and Gosworth. And of course, those areas, GP practices have a different contract. So one of the problems is actually the, the different contracts that are often given to practices in poor areas, which are less attractive to GPs to want to work there than elsewhere. So it is quite a knotty problem, but I think we must be very vigilant and actually see what the impact is and see what we can do about it. It's a really backward step. Some of these practices were set up quite deliberately, I think, after the Dasi review to, to actually ensure that people in deprived areas would have access to good primary healthcare services and that now is being taken away.
Can I just echo that? I represent the Wellbeing for Life Board on the Primary Care Commissioning Committee at the CCG since, and at the time when they took over the responsibility for commissioning primary care in addition to their existing responsibilities, I argued long and hard for voting rights for the council in relation to this sort of question and was told that that's not possible. So we have actually made representations to try and have that, that kind of influence. I think what I would draw your attention, because this is a problem in the system more generally, to the, to the issues that I've raised really for debate in, in my part of the annual reports on integrated care systems. Because although I know there are, there are many fears about accountable care systems and organisations and how those might work, the debate which is happening over integrated care systems does offer the opportunity for us to start and argue about some of these issues and about the way that we configure the entirety of health and care services. And I, I would encourage councillors to, to look at that and think about how we might argue through this forthcoming process with the NHS for a greater influence over the way that services are delivered to our communities.
Thank you. Councillor Cook.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This is another, is there anything more we can be doing type question? On page sixty-six, there's some remarks about children going hungry during the school holidays. Well, that's bad enough, but we're getting increasing reports about children actually going to school hungry. Hungry children can't learn properly. So is there anything more we can be doing?
Right. Well, I think we've seen in the press this week, quite a lot of publicity from teachers that they are having to feed children when they come to school and help them in, in other ways. I think one of the things that is worrying is that there is, there is at least one senior person in Public Health England doesn't think this is a problem. So we're going to have to do what we can to bring that to the attention of Public Health England and provide the evidence. As you know, we participated in Newcastle as one of four areas in a very successful project last summer, which provided food and enhancing activities for children in different settings. Sometimes in schools, two of our schools were involved, it was Bridgewater and Kenton School, sometimes in a community association, as in Blakelaw, and also with churches in Biker. There is a report that's imminent, an evaluation report, which I have heard is absolutely excellent in terms of the evidence it's got, in terms of the impact on children and, and in terms of the nature of the evaluation itself. It's the biggest ever apparently, even, even as, even compared with the United States. So there's a lot of evidence that we're going to have to look at, that if you provide food and activities in the right way, it can have a very positive impact. The government last Wednesday announced two million pounds to be spent on eight projects across the country of two hundred and fifty thousand each, to really replicate what we have done here in the North East. I mean, I think that's a way of actually deferring doing anything, doing the right thing, basically. What is the right thing? We know children are hungry, why aren't we giving them food in the school holidays and other times? We know what we did here in the North East did reach the most disadvantaged children and their parents. We involve their parents as well. So there's some, some very rich data about how they benefited. So I do think there is a bit some ethical issues about the government, you know, doing yet more pilots. It's a way of, I think, putting off decisions. But, you know, if it can build a case that there should be more provision, then that, that's to good. We hope that there will be a bid put in from the North East. I do happen to know that children North East want to put in a bid working with schools and I hope that we can support such a bid and I'm, I'm sure some of the schools will be in Newcastle. Whether we'll get sustainable funding for those projects that have took place last summer is another matter.
Nothing really to add, except to say this is a key issue that we're looking to address through the food plan as well, so.
Councillor Everdott.
Thank you, Eugene, for the usual statistics, et cetera. I have a couple of questions for you. You mentioned the drop in smoking, which glad to see. And I wondered, do we have any statistics on the percentage of people who are using vaping now to stop smoking cigarettes? The next question is, relates to page eighty-one and eighty-two, gonococcal infections and STIs. I am concerned to read that the reinfection rate for gonococcus is so high. And I just wonder, are they getting enough health education who's doing this? Why aren't the messages getting through? And what can we do to improve those stats there about the reinfection rate? And the third one relates to the incidence of TB. I wonder if you can give us some more information on the demographics here? Is it the usual things about age, ethnicity, et cetera? And how can we understand that better? And I know you mentioned the vaccine for flu. Can I put a personal plea in that you include some information in future about the vaccine for shingles? Because as somebody who was recently struck down by this and is still recovering, I'm shocked to see how many people have actually had this. And that, but I'm reading that the incidence has gone down a third since people have had the vaccine. But I have no idea about the incidence of shingles in Newcastle and, and what public health messages we can give to reduce that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The smoking fall, vaping, first of all, vaping is now the most popular method of quitting in the country. It's more or less plateaued. We've not, we're not, we're not seeing an, an increase beyond the levels that were reached a couple of years ago. But it's now, as you can see if you walk down the street in Newcastle, just how many people have now, have now started using it. There's still a pretty heated debate about the long-term impacts of that or the, any impacts on, on children and young people. In Newcastle, we don't have specific figures across the whole population, though we do have figures that are in the report on the Health Related Behaviour questionnaire for experimentation by young people. At the moment, our feeling is, as with, is that we're pretty much in line with the rest of England and that I don't think there's anything that you would find that was different in Newcastle. The, what is important when thinking about vaping and stop smoking services, incidentally, is that they, they contribute quite a small proportion of the overall prevalence change. So while we're seeing quite a big fall in, in smoking overall, the services that we provide whilst still being very cost-effective are actually only a small part of that. Those bigger trends, the people who choose to quit for themselves and use vaping and so on as a, as a method are the, the bigger part of it. Gonococcal rates and STIs, what can we do? That's a, a really tough question. And do you know, I had a feeling before this, because I thought councillor Hodat is going to ask me questions about, about STIs and TB. And I don't, I don't know that I can give you easy answers. If we had them, we would be, we would be addressing those already. My colleagues who are working on, on the whole question of sexual health and our, our commissioning of sexual health services are looking at the moment to try and pull together a broader collaboration across the city to figure out what else we can do in terms of raising awareness and changing approaches. We also have other new initiatives going in, like the, the prep scheme, which is being initiated in Newcastle this year because of our rates of HIV infection. The TB demographics, yes, you're right, they are, as you would expect them. Our rate, you'll see, incidentally, I noticed this afternoon, looking back at the, the minutes of the Health Scrutiny Committee, a mistake that I, I missed, it's my fault rather than the recording, that says that the TB rates are not significantly higher. They are, they are this year slightly significantly higher than the national rate in Newcastle. That's actually because the national rate fell and ours didn't, whereas ours is stable rather than rising. It's, it is a big issue for us and along with our colleagues at Public Health England, we're looking at what else we might do in the coming year and I'd be happy to keep you posted on that over, over the next few months. On the flu vaccine, you raised the worries, you also asked about shingles. I'm sorry that we don't have the data on shingles there. I will look that up and send it to you. I don't have it to hand at the moment, but thank you for that.
Okay. Councillor Higgins.
Lord Mayor, I'm conscious that we're probably running well over on questions and councillor Avery covered my question, which was about GP practices. So I'll forego the question, but I just want to add my voice to the appreciation to councillor Strether for the excellent and diligent way she's carried out her duties. And from a personal perspective, I'd just like to say that every time I've raised an issue with her, no doubt she's been very, very busy with cabinet matters, she's always responded very promptly and very helpfully and I'd like to thank her for that and wish her all the best for the future.
Councillor Keane.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Like councillor Cook, I was very pleased to see the topic of holiday hunger included in the report because it is much talked about. But I was, as Director of Public Health, and though I was a bit surprised that it wasn't covered by the survey of children's health done in, published in November, I think it was. Obviously, it's going to be a hard thing to measure, but until the report came out, the survey of teachers that councillor Strether referred to, I think it was very little quantitative data about it at all. It was mainly anecdotal. And it strikes me that a problem like this, before we know how to tackle it, we have to get a grasp of the problem, know what its geographical distribution is, what its demographic distribution is, the scale of the problem overall, and then we can put the appropriate response resources in. So my question, I suppose, is, is this report from the Thumber University going to cover that kind of data? And, you know, am I being too quantitative? Is it, is it possible to measure these things properly?
I haven't actually seen the report yet. I've only had a provisional presentation from Professor Greta De Feta, who's carried out this report from Northumbria University. But my understanding is that it's a very rich report in data. It has actually got data from children, from parents, from providers of services. And they collect, I thought was amazing, the people providing these schemes, looking after children, were actually at the same time throughout the day, every day, collecting data that could be used. So I can't, I can't say, having not seen it quite what's in it. It is going to be published soon. On the thirtieth of May, there's going to be an event at the Discovery Museum, a big children's party in the morning, and some presentations from the projects about what they did and what they thought were the benefits, and then a policy discussion in the afternoon. I think the places are going fast, but there may still be some left. But it, I think it will be used, it will be mined to be able to find answers to the sort of questions that you have, you have raised. And I hope that it will be put to very good use and that we could convince those in government that they really do have to take some action on it. Surely it's a basic human right of a child not to go hungry. And I think this works very well with our Child, Family, City work. And I'm really grateful to Professor De Feta, who has embraced us with great enthusiasm to do a really proper thorough research. This was not a quick and dirty evaluation. This is something really special.
The Health Related Behaviour questionnaire is probably not a good vehicle for trying to elicit this, because I have great difficulty in thinking about what the question is that we would ask of children that would allow us objectively to do it. And although I totally agree with councillor Strether that I think we can, I'm hoping we will see useful data from the, the Northumbria University analysis, I would be surprised if it was qualit, sorry, quantitative in the way that you've described. The problem is kind of illustrated really by something that councillor Strether said earlier, that a very senior colleague in Public Health England in, with, who specialises in this topic, remains dubious about the whole question of holiday hunger, which surprised me greatly when, when we discussed this a, a little while ago. So I'm hoping that we will start to kind of see some, some real focus placed on it as a consequence of the kind of work that, that's been done there. I would make a prediction though, which is that, that it is extremely likely that when we manage to map that, it will be the same map that we see for deprivation and for other indicators of, of child poverty and, and so on. I'd be amazed if it were not the same distribution. So that shouldn't hold us back in terms of thinking about how we should be trying to target support.
Thank you. Last question, councillor Ramon.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I thank the cabinet member and the director for a thorough, comprehensive report, covers an awful lot? Now councillor Hodat did ask part of what I was going to ask here and your response with regards to vapors or the e-cigarettes as known. The word that me and my colleague represented, there's about, I've lost count, possibly about seven or eight vapor places that sells e-cigarettes. If there isn't any clear linkage in terms of the reduction of smokers, embarrassingly, I'm a smoker and I'd like to say I'm a casual and responsible smoker, if there's such a thing. I'm literally killing myself gently. But if, if there's no links there, can I ask the director perhaps in the next year's report to look at another aspect of smoking? I'm trying to remember as I speak how I got into smoking, possibly something to do with peer pressures or somebody egging you on, that's how often a lot of things start. If e-cigarette is not harmful, I've come across a lot of young people smoking those, could this be a potential next stage into tobacco? Another one is shisha smoking. Now, shisha, there's a lot of shisha places in Newcastle and again, we ought to keep a, a close eye on this and our request really in, in the next year's report, if they could be something, if there's any analysis that could be had in terms of the danger that poses. I recently went to a, a function where I was shocked to see younger children, even adults passing, passing on the shisha to younger children. No, this is, surely this is not right, but if you could look into this perhaps and present something on the next year's report? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
There isn't really any such thing as a casual smoker, I'm sorry. I'll give you the lecture first, but the first cigarette is the worst. They're all bad, but the first one is the worst. The, you, you talked about peer pressure and initiation. I think on the upside, I'd say that we're seeing a more rapid fall in smoking and experimentation with smoking amongst young people and that's reflected in our local data as well as national data. So I think that's good. The data in this country don't support the idea that, that vaping is becoming a gateway for young people into smoking. That's disputed in America and maybe things will change, but at the moment, ASH and the other major organisations are, are pretty adamant that that's not happening. And I have to say, we don't see it in the local figures at the moment. So for now, I think, you know, touch wood, that looks okay. I would not say that vaping is necessarily a hundred per cent safe. We don't know. What we, what we can be sure of is that the chances of it being anywhere near as bad as tobacco are so remote that you're better off taking that risk than the risk with tobacco. With tobacco, we know it's incredibly bad for you. Every cigarette is bad for you. Vaping, so far we don't know, but the evidence seems to be that, that, that people achieve a degree of benefit from it. And also there are some interesting stats. We had a, we had a conference that I chaired over at the Centre for Life a couple of weeks ago, looking at the new guidance on e, the new evidence on e-cigarettes that Public Health England has just published. And one of the things that fascinates England has just published, and one of the things that fascinated me there was that one of the presenters from Oxford said, even for those people who decide to use vaping simply to reduce their smoking, who have no intention of quitting, if you follow them up, they're twice as likely to have quit in the following year. So there is actually quite a lot of circumstantial evidence of benefit there, and I think the other thing that really persuaded me of the need for that kind of harm reduction approach was knowing that in Sweden, they never made snoss illegal, which is a kind of tobacco that's treated and people, it's fairly revolting kind of stuff, but as a consequence, the lung cancer rates are way lower than the rest of Europe, and they really stand out, and I could go on about this, but I think the harm reduction side really makes the argument. On the question of shisha, I agree entirely. Actually, I was looking at one of those places last night and thinking, we need to have a closer look at exactly what they're doing and whether or not the rules are being broken here. I've raised this previously with my colleagues in environmental health. The scale of the problem, interestingly, I don't know. I think one of the things we'll try and pick up is what the perception of shisha is amongst, in our questionnaire activity subsequently, and we'll try and get back to you on that. So thank you.
Thank you. Does council agree to receive the report? Thank you very much. Our last report is councillor Bell on inclusive growth, and I'll now call on councillor Bell to introduce the report.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I hope that colleagues were able to tell by the way that the report's been presented that my portfolio now concentrates on ensuring we as a council create the best possible opportunities for our residents in terms of good quality jobs whilst creating a modern, 21st vibrant city for them to live in. As we're all aware, we continue to face unprecedented financial pressures and diminishing resources, however, I'm pleased to say that despite this, we have delivered what we said we would, creating jobs and the right environment to attract businesses, securing investment, increasing income streams, and modernising the city's skyline. Lord Mayor, I want to take the report as read, but I'd just like to pull out a couple of some of my highlights of the year within the report. So between October 2016 and September 2017, over 1300 jobs were either created or safeguarded in the city, with a particular success in tech, creative and digital sector, which is expanding rapidly and is estimated to be worth over £1 billion. We are running a number of initiatives to help our residents into work, including new futures focused on areas of high deprivation and groups facing specific disadvantage. Generation North East would support young people, targeted recruitment and training, creating jobs and training for local residents, and the skills hub focusing on work progression and job quality. Science Central is progressing strongly with the laboratory building, learning and teaching centre, and national innovation centres for ageing and smart data, all under construction. In addition, the first project initiated as a result of the legal and general investment is entering construction phase. Also, Lord Mayor, after a lot of hard work and negotiations with landowners, good progress is now being made on both the northern and southern blocks of Pilgrim Street. Also, Lord Mayor, the UTC at Stephenson Quarter will be completed later this year. The often overlooked North Bank of the Tyne is going from strength to strength, supporting 800 offshore and subsea industry jobs. Plans are in place to extend the site, create an additional space for new industry. The past 12 months have seen development of exciting plans to improve Northumbria Street and the surrounding area, as befitting the main shopping street of a regional capital. The first round of engagement with stakeholders has taken place and plans are being refined, a priority being what we can do before the start of the Great Exhibition of the North. The first phase of the rise in Scotswood is almost complete, and plans are being put in place for more housing, shops, health services and community space, thus creating a vibrant, sustainable community in what has proven to be a highly popular and successful development. The strategic land release is improving the infrastructure, providing school places and recreation facilities as well as new homes. To support the recreation provision and encouraging increased participation in sport and grassroots sports especially, successful parklife funding has been acquired, with support from the new communities, with the new improved facilities at Bullock Steds and Blakewalk Park. Anyone travelling along Scotswood Road will now be able to see the Eagles basketball stadium. It's now under construction and it's coming up quick, very quick. This is not only to provide a home base for the team, but also facilities for the extensive outreach programme for hundreds, if indeed not thousands, of young people. The office accommodation in this fine building, the project has enjoyed particular success with the securing of a lease with HM Courts and Tribunal Services to relocate into the civic centre, providing valuable revenue stream. Planning permission has been granted for a number of exciting city centre developments, including plans for offices and leisure provisions at White Hart Yard, apartments, offices and student flats at St James' Metro, and a 26-storey residential building on Rutherford Street. Planning, however, also strives to protect and enhance our green spaces and have used section 106 contributions for biodiversity schemes and reviewing our tree strategy to ensure maximum benefit is secured from these important assets. The Land and Property Asset Review, aiming to be fit for purpose, have an asset portfolio which is fit for purpose and it's well underway. The property team has worked exceedingly hard on this and expect it to generate around £8 million of capital receipts in 2017/18. Lord Mayor, these are just some of the achievements of the last 12 months, there are many more contained in the report, and I've also put in there some issues coming up for next year. Just want to mention one thing in close, Lord Mayor, I had not forgotten the 50th anniversary of the sad death of Dr Martin Luther King, and there's one quote that I wanted to pull out, which is from the great man on safe, 'Life's most persistent and urgent question is, what are you doing for others?' Lord Mayor, the work that's been put into this report isn't just by me or any other individuals, it's by a team, that's councillors of this chamber, of this administration, but across the council as a whole, the officers and our partners within the city, and indeed across Europe, but also now globally. I'd like to thank everybody who's done this, and that's what we are doing for others. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
councillor Raymond.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I've got an observation and a question, Lord Mayor. This will probably be my final contribution at council for a while, and as such, thank you to everyone in East Scotswood, it's been an absolute honour and a privilege to serve you all. One thing I've learnt in this role is that as well as asking the probing questions, it's also right to say, well done, when a cabinet member does something that's positive, and the work done with Newcastle Eagles basketball arena falls into that category certainly, as this development will do so much to add to the positive work in the public health area that the club's already done, and in promoting the city across the country by the most successful team in British basketball history. And if councils also look into confer freedom of the city in the next municipal year, it could do a lot worse than look at the Eagles and Fab Flonoyd. So well done to councillor Bell and all those involved in this project who are staff at the council. Councillor Bell also mentions the number of jobs created in the city, which is also positive news. At Audit Committee a couple of weeks ago, Lord Mayor, we had a very sobering assessment of the impact that Brexit is likely to have on the city's economy, and the reduction in the economic output of the area is forecast to be absolutely devastating. The worst case scenario would have been a 16% contraction in the local economy. This will more than, unfortunately, more than wipe out any gains that are showed in this report, and then some probably, so can I therefore ask what councillor Bell and councillor Forbes are doing to lobby their National Party and MPs devoting a way that mitigates the worst effects of Brexit on our great north city? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you councillor for the question. It has been a great honour working with the Eagles basketball team and associates, the owners. It has been problematic, and there's been issues with viabilities on the site, to mention just one of the problems, but we're glad that for the basketball team to have a future in this great city and have another great sporting team within the city, it's an honour for us. So I wish the best of luck in their new home, and I can't wait for the first ball to be tipped off down there. With the EU and Brexit, well, where do we start? I've been going to many meetings and presentations on the effects of Brexit. What I can say is that not just the leader and myself, but all the members across here will be doing everything to future-proof this great city to ensure that we continue to be a prosperous city. And I do believe, I do have some props here, that we're preparing it in the right way. If we read the local press, not only are we the place to be within the country, we are the place to be within the region, and truthful recognition of our place as a region's capital. I think that helps us. Unemployment rates, we have seen a fall in the unemployment rates, but unfortunately, it's still above the national average, but we are actually turning that around, and I think that puts us in good stead. We do have to continue to lobby members of parliament from all sides of the House to ensure that it's not just talk and we do end up with a deal that's good for England, but also good for the regions, and in particular, as far as we're concerned, good for Newcastle.
Thank you. councillor Lambert.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Yeah, that was a fairly good report, Jed, very well researched, solidly researched, detailed, and it's quite clear, according to a lot of policy experts and business people, that Newcastle is certainly punching above its weight in terms of investments, job creation, and basically creating a sustainable economy, both in Newcastle and in the North East. Just one issue that I would like to raise with Jed, he quite rightly mentioned the, perhaps probably the last actually, the five-year community-led local development programme, which will benefit, quite frankly, not just the riverside wards of the city, but also some of the northwestern wards as well. Just a fairly pragmatic question is, where are we at with this, Jed, in terms of this programme, which will clearly benefit a whole range of social groups, including the young and the over 50s? Just where we are with that progress?
Thank you for the question, colleague, and thank you for the hot, warm and support in my presentation. What I would say is on the CLLD, Community Led Local Development, is we've just closed the first round of applications, we've assessed them, and there has been a couple of successful applicants, so that's nice to see the money going straight out. Will it be the last? We will be applying for any funding that we can from Europe until we're actually out of Europe. 2020 is still a way off, but then it's going to take a long process after that where there still may be funds that may be available to us, and if we're to put the toll possible, then we will continue the trend that we've had. We've got to remember that as a region and as a city, we do actually benefit from our membership of the European Customs Union, and we will continue to push as much as what we possibly can, as I said in the last response. What we need to do now is we need to continue the lobbying to ensure that this is doing as serious as possible, but also protecting the good work that's been done in places like Newcastle.
Thank you. councillor Faulkner.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you for the report, Jed. Very good narrative there, lots of good things happening in the city, and thank you in your peroration for your very generous recognition of the contributions of those who have gone before, I think particularly of Stephenson Quarter and Science Central perhaps. I just want to ask a question on economic development in two parts, and one on property in two parts. On economic development, this is something I raised at scrutiny. For all you say you had some impressive figures about the growth of digital sector, the truth of the matter is that we haven't done a piece of substantial research about the nature of the economy of this city for at least 12 years, and I think it's long overdue that we did it, so we understand the types of businesses, the nature of businesses, the size of businesses, the ownership of businesses, perhaps, as a base for the future. And I think the director recognised that that was perhaps something worth doing as well when he was at scrutiny. The second question on economic development is one that I mentioned to the chief executive, which is that if we are, as we will have, a north of Tyne arrangement for the future, is that the moment for us to actually bite the bullet and have a shared economic development team, rather than have three local authorities still competing for sites and all that kind of thing? The moment surely has come to realise some economies and get some better focus into the work that we do there. However successful we've been in this city, let's look forward to even more success on a shared basis. The question on property is this, and you put property, I thought it was councillor Dunn's portfolio, but you put property in your report, so I really want to, you mentioned the civic centre. It started as an 18 million project a couple of, four years ago, a couple of years later it was a 45 million project. I have the impression, and perhaps you can confirm this, that it is running significantly behind. I noticed in the report that Cabinet had about budget progress for this year, that under the heading of office accommodation, we have a £400,000 overspend in our budget, that surprises me, and I noticed from the budget we approved at the last council meeting for the forthcoming, or the year that we are about to enter, just entered, that there's an additional £1.5 million put into the budget for our strategic property team. I wondered if you could just unpick these numbers somehow, or if you can't, perhaps write to members about it, because there seems to be a confused picture emerging and I don't fully understand it. And then my second part of the property question relates to something else you chose to mention in the report, which is the joint venture with Northumberland on revenue and benefits and other transactional services, which is great, but we were a bit shocked to hear at scrutiny the other day that the new team is looking to purchase additional accommodation. And I'm thinking with two local authorities that have probably shed 30 to 40% of staff, and given what they're doing at the civic centre, it seems incredible that we're going to purchase additional accommodation, so perhaps you could shed some light on that as well, please.
Thank you councillor Faulkner, and thank you for the time that I've spent with you in this chamber and elsewhere during both of our careers. It has been very interesting at times, and I've always looked forward to it. On the last part, I will have to get back to you on that, because as I said, it was only just discussed the other day at scrutiny, and that part might well be not within my portfolio, but that may be a financial issue that's came up and it hasn't came across my desk yet. Property, the civic centre refurbishment, investment, may I say, is that I was delighted to be able to announce this, because I love this building so much, and I think a lot of the people in the city love this building, and there's one thing that they wouldn't want to see is for the local authority to shift out of this building, for it to become even more dilapidated than what it was, and for it to end up under a bulldozer. So the steps were taken to make sure that we prevented that from happening. So a robust business case was put together, it was a 25-year business case. What we did see right from the start is that there would be substantial investment in the civic centre, but what we did also see is that there would be a substantial return. Why the extra investment has came in, because I'm going to make it abundantly clear now that it is ahead of time, so it's ahead of where we predicted, and why the extra investments came in is because we've accelerated that fast that we can actually save more money by investing now, rather than waiting and having to bring people back in. So we brought the next phase ahead of schedule, and that was not predicted within the working of the business case, but it's still within the financial envelope that was first predicted. So I hope that's clear now, is that it's on time, actually ahead of time, and it's well within the financial envelope, and we have actually managed to create a substantial revenue stream for the city council, which is helping protect not just this much love building, but also protect vital services for the communities within the city. Evidence, well, putting cases together for businesses. Yes, it has been a while since there's been any reports commissioned by the local authority as such, but then that's not one thing I would want to do, is to duplicate what's actually available. I'm surprised at scrutiny, I wasn't there myself, if there wasn't evidence given that from LET reports, the local enterprise partnership, is that we can actually take evidence from them which is affecting- them which is affecting us in Newcastle and then we can actually overlay the information that we have for the city. Now, if that wasn't brought, I'll have to see exactly what the question was from the scrutiny. So if you can forward that on to me and I'll show you that I'll get back to you with a full response on it. But we do have the evidence there, both regionally and locally, to prepare robust business cases about where business stands in the city now and where we're predicting that it should stand in future years. I think that's everyone I've covered. Councillor Faulkner? North of Tyne, no crystal ball, but still discussing exactly what we could do within the north of Tyne. If there's efficiencies to be made, it's identified through a robust business case, there may be many different avenues that we may want to look at to ensure that we still have robust services for the residents within Newcastle but also the north of Tyne and at the same time have effective services that will cover the full area. Where we will see joint services, that will be open for full transparency and we'll have negotiations and discussions at the appropriate time.
I still have five people to ask questions, so I think with the time span I won't be taking any more questions, but I do have Higgins, Stevenson, Stone, Schofield and Avery and I'll be just taking those five. So can we start with councillor Higgins, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Yeah, I just want to thank councillor Bell for his report and I think that it sort of encapsulates what a vibrant city Newcastle is, it's capital of the region. I think the Civic Centre actually is symbolic of its role in the region and I'm amazed that people on the other side of the council chamber in the past have questioned its future sustainability. It's so important that we have that as a symbol of the capital of the region. But my question relates to the regeneration of Scottswood, which is tremendous at the moment, it's really gathering pace. We had years of stagnation, of course, when the party opposite was in power, but since we've now returned to the Labour council in the city, we've really picked up on the housing programme, it's exceeding our expectations and we're now moving on to phase two, which councillor Bell's described, which is about healthcare facilities, retail, community facilities and things like that. But one of my bugbears, and I've mentioned it several times in the past, is inadequate public transport in the west end of the city. Now, maybe I can't ask councillor Bell if he can deliver the metro system for me, but I would hope that he can support me and possibly the leader of the council in his role as well could support me in improving public transport links in the west end to really build on the regeneration that's happening in the area.
Thank you councillor, thank you, Lord Mayor. Yes, I totally support everything that councillor Higgins has said there. What we're not about in this council is just building homes, what we're about is building communities. I've had the pleasure of walking around this estate on numerous occasions now and been talking to some of the new residents and I get some residents from Atkey Road, from Armstrong Road, but also get residents that came from other parts of the North East. And there's one thing that they've said to us, because I did actually push the question, is that does this feel like a home or does it actually feel like a community? And I was delighted when they turned around and said, we feel like we've got a community here and that's what we've all been about and that's what we want to do. Part of that is the next stage, when we have the infrastructure put in place and part of the infrastructure has got to be on top of the community facilities and the doctors, the GPs practices in the area, which we'll try to recruit into the area, education, but also we do have to have good public transport. With the plans that's happening within the city centre, one thing that we're keen to do is to protect a line of public transport that could actually come out to the west and the outer west and I'm still standing by that. I think it's been accepted now that the days of tunnelling are probably over within the city because of financial restraints that have been placed upon us, but if we protect the lines for future use, then who knows what type of transport it may be. It could be anything from an electric bus to a fact of some tube that may be able to get councillor Higgins back to his ward quick. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Stevenson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Councillor Bell, thank you for your report. I'm glad you touched on the community-led local development. Can I just make a plea? Certainly we want as much money as we can from Europe and anywhere else, that's got to spare. We'll definitely make good use of it, but what I would like is the process to be considered because it seems to, what I've been led to believe, it's been quite a stringent process and many community groups and many residents, as opposed to organisations, don't feel that they've felt it's an easy process. I think this is very important if we're calling something community-led local development, that it actually is what it says. So I would just like, as is a new thing, it is something that we're learning from, but can we please look at the process? Thank you.
The answer is, I certainly will bring that to the attention of the board, it is what we've had discussions on already. What we do have is we have a very small team, but a highly motivated team there. One thing that they will do with residents in particular, not so much the larger organisations but residents in particular, is take them through step by step. It is quite a robust process that people have to go through, but then again, it is actually audited, not by us but externally and Europe is keeping an eye on how the funds are being spent. So each step does have to have a full audit and that's why the process has to be in place. But can I ask colleagues within the chamber to make sure that any organisations, it may not be in their ward but they may be involved with an organisation, it's a geographically tied fund, but please have a look at it and if there's any organisations that you know within that area, please ask them to apply and officers are just in the building and they will be able to help, especially individuals through the process.
Thank you. Councillor Stone?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Councillor Bell may remember that last year the opposition raised the issue of the area around the arena and the potential future redevelopment, given that there are now question marks over it because of Gateshead, Quayside construction and a new centre being built there. Since then, there's not much been announced on that part of Newcastle. I know there is work going, building out from Stevenson Quarter towards it, but that strikes us as still being a key site for the future of our city centre and its growth. I was wondering if councillor Bell could give any update on that. Just one further question, since the topic of biodiversity has come up. I don't know if this is directly under councillor Bell's brief or not, but the question was raised with me by someone on doorstep this week regarding the Guildhall. I don't know if that is still under council control, the Guildhall? The point was made that with the issue of the kittiwakes, netting has been erected on the roof of the Guildhall with seemingly designed to prevent the kittiwake's nesting and I wonder if councillor Bell could give assurances he'd look into that if that's the case? Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank councillor Stone. On the Guildhall, we'll take that one first. I don't know the exact size of the budget, but there's renovation work that's going on, there was serious dilapidation to the building, again, another much-loved and cherished building, especially in the heart down on the Quayside, and people wanted to see that restored and actually brought back to its former glory and also protected. Now, I'm not quite sure what netting is in place, but I am sure that one thing is, I don't know whether there was kittiwakes on the roof. One thing I've learnt over the last few years is kittiwakes are very particular about where they wish to roost for their short period. I think it's about three months that they actually come inland in the nest. I will ask questions about what is happening, what prevention is being put in place, but also about how we can take this forward. It is the biggest, the largest inland flock of kittiwake, so what we'd like to see is how that can be encouraged but also not taken away from the beauty of the Quayside and not causing destruction to any of our much-cherished buildings when, again, we haven't got the resources to keep on going back and doing serious amounts of work to each and every one of the buildings. So I think taking a look at this and I will do some inquiries and find out exactly where we stand, but I think encouraging any future developments that's coming further up the Tyne to actually see how we can use that to possibly find a roosting home for the kittiwakes. On the metro arena, there is a period of exclusivity that I'm not able to discuss in public what's happening. Indeed, I can't even discuss with my colleagues at Crossing Gateshead or the metro arena what's happening with that. What I can see is the land that we are involved with around the arena is that discussions are ongoing about how that can actually be freed up. I talked about much-loved and cherished buildings within the city. I think there's one place that we'd all like to see improved, which is the west bank of the Tyne on the west side of the Reddyve Bridge and that's something that I'm determined to bring in. I had a couple of targets when I took this portfolio on, one was Science Central, Scottswood, one was Pilgrim Street and that one I absolutely detest because it is such a blot on the landscape of our beautiful city and it's the first thing that you see in the gateway of the city coming in on the train. Discussions are ongoing and I'm hoping that we can actually make some announcement on that probably around summertime.
Thank you councillor Bell. Councillor Schofield?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to thank councillor Bell for the comprehensive, wide-ranging report and I just really appreciate the importance that he gives to the EU-funded, community-led development project on page 112. I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank officers supporting the local action group, a part of this project, that they are assisting very helpfully all the people who have responsibility for funding. It's an innovative project demanding community organisations, politicians, officers to work together in new ways and all of us involved are on a steep learning curve. Officer support is critical to its success and to making sure that probity and accountability under EU rules is kept in place. And I'd just like to ask councillor Bell what she has to say on how he thinks it will make a difference to ways of working in the future and motivation for businesses, startups and growth in the areas that are part of the project. Thank you.
Lord Mayor, and thank you councillor for the question. There's nothing better than actually going somewhere and seeing where you've actually made that difference, that's why I used that quote before. One of the examples I gave is not too much in the CLLD area, well, it is actually just before goes into Walles End, which is on the north bank of the Tyne, where I went down and spoke to a young lad, I was introduced to him by the owners down there, and they turned around and said that this lad came in on a pushbike and asked for a job. And I had a word with him and I said, is that true? He says, yeah, it did. I came down, he says, I thought I'd just try my luck, came down and I says, what's the score now? He says, I've got a young family, I have a house in the east end of Newcastle and I've actually got a second-hand BMW in the car park and I had to get rid of my bike. And I thought, what a difference that's made by somebody getting an opportunity. Community-led local development can give that opportunity to other people within the geographical area and that's what we want to see. We want to see more people getting that chance in their life that perhaps they might not have been given. So through businesses, investing and staying goes back to the questions before about what we're doing to make sure that we're future-proofed, is a case that we encourage as much of this development now when we can, that's then causing regeneration within the city boundaries and we're also seeing it better for our residents.
Thank you. Councillor Bell, last question. Councillor Avery?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I was actually around Blythopon this afternoon and residents are really incredibly excited about the possibilities coming from the Parklife project. I was just wondering if you could tell us a bit more about what plans might be developing to ensure that as many people as possible can benefit from a fantastic site, whether there's any public transport or walking infrastructure planned to help as many people as possible access a fantastic site and get maximum benefit from a new and revitalised sporting facility, which I think is a fantastic credit to the officers who worked on it in a time when so many facilities are disappearing or becoming dilapidated, that we're going to have a really state-of-the-art facility for football in Newcastle.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you councillor for the question. This is actually going to lead, I'm not ducking the question one little bit whatsoever, but this is going to lead into cross-portfolio work because it'll be my portfolio that secured funding for Bullocksteads and also went through the deals with the university to ensure that we've managed to maintain Bullocksteads and then, well, we'll be working with councillor McGinnis on how we actually and what we actually put into these facilities and what the benefits of the Parklife scheme will be. When we've chosen the sites, we couldn't have identified better locations because of public transport, but also the opportunity is going to be there for alternative forms of transport to get to these facilities, which is what we want to see. So cycling to both these facilities is going to be available, but also the fact is that there is good public transport links, metro up at Bullocksteads around the corner and good bus links, Pontieland Road for Cowgate and Blayt Law. Watch out for the detail, we'll be having discussions with the local members as well as we're getting to the next stage and that's when we'll get into exactly what, when and let's get into it, let's get it used. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much councillor Bell. Does councillor agree to receive the report?
Yes.
Okay, we have one appointment, is it agreed to set out?
Agreed.
Move on to notice of motion, changes to the decision-making process. A call on councillor Faulkner to move the motion and seconded by councillor Ashby.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I said at the last meeting of council on the budget that I had a sense of Groundhog Day for the debate and you could probably say the same about this because I'm taking advantage of standing orders by bringing a motion which is pretty much the same motion that I've brought twice before over the past six years. But this time I'm kind of using the proposition as a platform to share some of our concerns about the state of democracy in this council. First, I do want to point out that since my last motion on the subject, several additional councils have chosen to change from a leader and cabinet model that was imposed by the Blair government nearly 20 years ago on councils to a more inclusive committee system. So now we have large county councils like Nottinghamshire, we have unitaries like Brighton, we have London Boroughs like Sutton and Kingston and Barnet, lots of district councils, most recently West Dorset, whose change was very strongly endorsed through a referendum. Committees have been the, they sometimes get a bad name, but they've been the backbone of local government since, well, way back to Victorian times I guess, giving opportunities for councillors of all backgrounds to be involved in debating and deciding policy and deploy their diverse experience and interests and talents. Councils that have changed, have gone back to a committee system and not harking back to the old days, but they're really introducing quite streamlined committee systems that are able to retain the best elements of scrutiny as well and certainly don't compromise the decisions of the electorate in terms of who they choose, which party they choose because of the proportionality of membership of committees. I just mentioned a recent change and that's Worcester. Worcester have simply created three committees, one that's policy and resources, one that's communities and one that's environment. And for us, if we chose to go down this route, as we're Children's Education Authority and also Social Care Authority, one might have two additional ones like that. I want to quote one of the members in Worcester in the speech that he made when he was arguing the case for this change. He said, "The public, the public will benefit from a better quality of discussion and debate where a greater emphasis will be on the merits of any proposal. Under the current cabinet system, the committee system guarantees the participation, unlike the current cabinet system, the committee system guarantees the participation of all councillors in decision-making and will not exclude anyone's councillor just because they're not a member of the cabinet or because their party is in opposition." And when it came to Sutton, I read a very interesting, as part of their review of how it was working, they said, "Overall, we feel that backbench councillors do now have greater involvement in council business. Group meetings, interesting, group meetings are much more informed as there are more than just 10 councillors who are in the know about each issue." So, interesting observations from elsewhere. The narrative from these councils and from quite a few very substantial reports from bodies of interest in local government is that under the cabinet, leader and cabinet model, except for voting on the budget, councillors do feel that they have rather little in the way of policymaking responsibility or role and very little in terms of service improvement. So if you look what's happened here, you know, in the last few years, we reduced the number of committees dramatically. We used to have open cabinet subcommittees, just two of them, on neighbourhoods and development, which certainly some officers who were around at the time said they found very valuable in bouncing off ideas and getting a discussion going as an interim stage in the decision-making process. going as an interim stage in the decision-making process. Secondly, of course, councillors were taken off membership of about 90% of the external bodies. I didn't agree with that, I thought we should be in touch with the lifeblood of the city, charities, arts organisations and so on. We scrapped procurement, we rolled it into cabinet and now important decisions on significant spend get far less attention than before. We scrapped the LSP, partnership politics is about the chief executive having private, unminuted meetings with the heads of other public sector bodies. We reduced the frequency of city council and watch out, it'll probably reduce again. We had decisions delegated to cabinet members, which have sometimes very often been accompanied by rather poor reports that haven't helped members' understanding of the process. And our ward committees are much diminished on what they were. We were regarded as being one of the leading authorities in community engagement, we won a EuroCities award. Participatory budgeting's gone, some ward committees haven't met since 2016, not to mention the reduction in the budgets. So what I'm really saying is that we think it's time to look again at how we do things here, we want to breathe some new life into our local democratic structures, give councillors a more meaningful role instead of marginalising them, as I do feel we do now.
Thank you, councillor Faulkner. Councillor Ashby, could you second the motion, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It's been one of the saddest experiences of my brief service on this council to hear honourable and learned members of the group opposite speak with knowledge on subjects and then be obliged by their whips to vote against their own best judgement. In this chamber, we have guillotines and rules restricting discussion and most of the time we're debating and voting on fait accompli. The decisions are made by cabinet and then rubber stamped here. There is a better way, one which I experienced many years ago when I was also an opposition councillor on Middlesbrough Borough Council. That is the committee system, which enables all members of council to make meaningful contributions to consideration of decisions before they're set in stone. And because it's so difficult to whip, the expertise of members can be brought together to make better decisions. Unlikely as it seems now, on occasions I was able to team up with young, left-wing Labour councillors to show the old guard the error of their ways. I believe the administration has made a major error in cutting back on ward committee meetings so the public no longer has as many chances to hear about the local work on their behalf. In my view, this is a contributory factor to the increasingly bad-tempered nature of exchanges on social media. People know you're not listening to them and they don't like it. As what we do is supposed to be in their name, it's time we brought back a bit more democracy into our dealings. Lord Mayor, I second the motion.
Thank you. Councillor, yes?
We have another resolution, could I move that, we go straight to the vote, please? We've had this, councillor Faulkner said, we've had this three or four times in the last six years, so I would like to move the vote.
I think it's entirely unacceptable to suggest that a motion presented by an opposition councillor should be cut short so that you can debate your own motion. We have an agenda and we should keep to it.
Okay, we'll take one more speaker, which is councillor Taylor, and then we'll go to the vote. No, sorry? Oh, sorry, sorry, councillor Taylor, you'd like to speak, please do.
I'm just taking advice.
I'm not asking you, Greg, I'm not asking you with respect, I'm asking the Lord Mayor. I'm asking the Lord Mayor for an answer, okay?
We only have two, councillor Ashton, we only have two speakers.
No, I've moved the vote, Lord Mayor.
Yes.
Right, David, you have the right to reply.
I'm not quite sure what I'm replying to.
You're replying, we're moving to the vote, but you've got the right to reply.
Of which there has been none and I think it's a gross discourtesy to the whole democratic process. Especially, Lord Mayor, when the next motion is on a subject that councillor Huddart brought to this chamber just a few months ago. So your argument, George, is entirely spurious and I'm ashamed at you and I'm ashamed, and if you're going to vote for that, I'm ashamed the lot of you, and perhaps it is the right time for me to leave this stupid place.
Okay, I'm abiding by standing orders, we move to the vote, so.
Can I just propose that the moving of standing orders, we can go to the vote, move to the standing order, please. Don't just move straight to the vote on the motion, you take a vote on the movement made by councillor.
So you want, do we do that? No, we don't do that, I'm abiding by what I'm being told.
Lord Mayor, sorry.
Can we just let John speak?
Just to clarify, Lord Mayor, the position is set out in standing order 18, there is a scope for a closure motion and so it can be brought without notice providing that it is seconded. Then, yes, you do need a vote on the closure motion and just to clarify, just to clarify, it's a vote on the motion to move to the next business.
Okay, named vote. Jackie, can you sit in your proper seat?
So can you ring the bell?
Can we ring the bell, please?
Who's seconded this?
Who was the official seconder? I know there's two. Veronica? Has everybody voted, because that doesn't look quite right. The motion then is carried to go to the next item of business. So then we take a vote on the motion?
Yeah. It doesn't seem to have picked up any votes.
So we're now taking the vote on the motion?
No, the original motion lapses. No, the original motion lapses.
Simply the original motion lapses. We're moved to go to the vote and that's what we are voting on, we voted on that, so now we're going to the vote on the motion.
Was it moved to go to the vote?
It was moved to go to the vote, yeah. So now we're voting on the motion. Can we clear the board, please? So that the vote fails, 40 in favour, 40 against. So we now move on to the next item of business, which is the notice of motion, modern-day slavery. Councillor Kemp to move the motion, seconded by councillor Kilgawa.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This is a new motion, there is not a previous one. There are quite often similar issues debated, that's a facile comment. Lord Mayor, it's a shocking fact that while most people consider the slave trade to have ended when slavery was abolished in 1833, there are more slaves today than ever before in human history. Figures from the International Labour Organisation suggest that there are more than 40 million people in modern slavery across the world, with nearly 25 million held in forced labour. It has been estimated that forced labour is generating criminal profits of approximately 150 billion a year. Modern slavery is the illegal exploitation of people for personal or commercial gain, victims trapped in servitude, which they were deceived or coerced into and cannot leave. Modern slavery is hidden, often in plain sight, on our streets, in local businesses and even suburban streets. Unwittingly, our communities may be using victims of modern slavery to wash their cars, paint their nails and lay their drives, they may be even living next door. As councillors and leaders of local places, we all need to be aware that the UK is a source, transit and destination country for modern slavery. The Home Office estimates that there are over 13,000 potential victims of modern slavery in the UK. We know sadly that modern slavery has taken place right here in our great city. These are shocking numbers to contemplate, but while statistics are important, it's the human beings behind them which should inspire us to fight the crime. In years to come, numbers will be forgotten, the names, faces and voices of brave yet vulnerable victims who ask for our help will not. The help which councils are able to give, bolstered by the passing of the Modern Slavery Act 2015, is crucial. The act provides victims with greater protection and police with greater powers. It also requires businesses to report on the actions they are taking to identify and address slavery in their supply chains. And it is my belief that as a freedom city, this city council should lead by example. As a council and as human beings, we have a responsibility to support victims, but more importantly, we have a responsibility to do everything we can to ensure that environments where this exploitation exists and can exist are not accepted and are eradicated. As a city council, we have significant spending powers and influence and it is important that we take this position seriously and ensure that we have the effective processes in place to make sure that through procurement of services, we do not allow any potential contractor to succeed in securing contracts from the authority through the use of modern-day slavery. We have a clear leadership role to play as the local authority and it is hugely important that we do everything in our powers to walk through, to work through the eradication of modern slavery, we must set the example. The partnership work with Northumbria Police, National Crime Agency, Crown Prosecution Service, Gang Masters Licensing Authority, the British Red Cross and Hope for Justice in particular during the Anti-Slavery Day was acknowledged as a hugely successful operation resulting in arrests and appropriate support being given to the victims of modern slavery. As a city council, we have a record of dealing with exploitation that is recognised nationally and I am extremely proud of all those amazing public servants who deliver these services, both in the identification of the perpetrators and victims, but also through the amazing work of those who provide the support and safety to those most vulnerable amongst our society. Council employers are already working incredibly hard rescuing and caring for victims while reducing the risk of repeat trauma. From the identification, referral and support of victims through to providing shelter, safeguarding and ensuring our own supply chains are slavery-free, local government is central to every facet of the slavery fight. Councils have expertise in partnership working, whether collaborating with schools to protect children or consulting with the housing sector to keep tenants safe, many local government employers lead the way in good diligent and professional teamwork. Through agreeing this motion, I believe we will send out an extremely positive message, one that states very publicly that we oppose exploitation of all kinds and will fight it every step, that we will work with partners to identify where it exists and that we will ensure the expertise of our officers and those from across the partner organisations are available to provide advice and guidance to organisations seeking help to ensure that they are not acting in any way to allow exploitation. As a trade unionist, I am extremely proud to propose in this motion the advocacy of trade union membership and to actively encourage workers to join the trade union. I'm also keen to promote the role of whistleblowing, both within the city council but to see this policy adopted by contractors. It is really abhorrent that some people feel it is acceptable to exploit a fellow human being for profit and it is important that the city council ensures that we make it known that we will work with all our partners and businesses to ensure that we do all we can to prevent this exploitation. It is right that we lobby central government to extend the level of support available to victims beyond the current 45 days, which is frankly just wrong. In a speech on slavery to the House of Commons in 1791, William Wilberforce famously closed his remarks by saying, "Having heard all of this, you may choose to look the other way, but you can never say again that you do not know." More than 200 years later, we cannot look the other way but must ensure that as an authority, we are well-equipped and active in tackling this abhorrent crime. I urge council to support this motion.
Can?
Sorry, just before we leave today, I didn't want to draw councillor Kemp off on his stride. I just, through the advice of the legal officer, I just wanted to formally note on my register of interest that I am the regional secretary of the core party, the update on my register of interest hasn't been updated yet, but the legal officer says that I'm still able to say part in the debate, just because it makes mention to it in the motion, sorry.
Okay, thank you, that's noted. Councillor Kilgawa, second.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I add my thanks to those offered by others tonight, to those members on both sides of the chamber who are stepping down in May? As respected colleagues, despite what we've just said, and in some cases, personal friends, I know your contributions to council life and to the communities you've served will be missed. Lord Mayor, I know we're all horrified by the estimated numbers of people forced into exploitative, risky and abusive situations nationally. It's certainly shocking to think that not only does slavery still exist, but that it exists here in Newcastle. However, thankfully, we do already have safeguarding policies and procedures in place which are proving, sorry, to be effective. Colleagues may recall that council officers, including officers from adult social care, working with a range of partners from Northumbria Police, the National Crime Agency, Crown Prosecution Service and other agencies that councillor Kemp's just mentioned, have carried out several successful operations in the last couple of years, including the examples we've just heard about, resulting in a number of arrests and a number of vulnerable people being taken to safety and supported by specialist officers. I'm reassured that officers from all the agencies involved continue to look for opportunities to learn and to refine procedures, but safeguarding policies, procedures and most importantly, practices are already in place to protect and support those vulnerable members of our communities who may be being exploited. Both the children's and adult safeguarding boards continue to monitor safeguarding activity and to report annually to scrutiny committees and to cabinet members as appropriate. It is right then to ensure that good practice is extended to our procurement practices and that our contractors should be required to comply with the Modern Slavery Act wherever it applies and that sanctions should be imposed when non-compliance is identified. It is right also that suppliers be reminded that their workers are free to join a trade union and must not be treated unfairly for doing so. And it is right too that we should encourage staff internally and those working for our suppliers to blow the whistle on any suspected examples of modern slavery. Understandably, abused and exploited victims of modern slavery may need support for longer than 45 days currently allowed by central government, which is why lobbying government to extend that support beyond the current limit is such an important aspect of this motion. I'm very proud of the good work already carried out in the city to tackle modern slavery. I'm proud also that the work carried out by Newcastle City Council is held up as an example of national good practice. But there's always more we can do. To echo councillor Kemp, we as a city council will not look the other way, but will lead by example. And by adopting the resolutions and the motion before council tonight, we move a step closer to eradicating this appalling exploitation of our fellow citizens. Second the motion, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Schofield?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I've recently returned from the Syrian border where I interviewed Syrian women enslaved, tortured and raped as weapons of war, so I am pleased to speak to and support councillor Kemp's motion on slavery. As he said, it builds on the council's excellent work with a range of partners in this notoriously difficult and fraught area and I'd like to add my thanks to them. To understand the full significance of this motion, we should note that the term "modern slavery" describes a complex range of jobs and activities across many sectors, agriculture, hospitality, fishing, domestic service, care services, health clubs, to name a few. People usually in dire circumstances are isolated with few or no entitlements, many are brutally enslaved, trafficked or reduced as the property of an owner. We know, of course, that particular groups are vulnerable to different types of slavery and that children, young people, as Claire has talked about, women, refugees and asylum seekers are the most at risk. Commitment to this charter against modern slavery, in my view, will be a huge step forward for the council. For the first time, it will have corporate responsibility and so the power to make companies along its whole chain of supplies, goods and services. along its whole chain of supplies, goods and services accountable for their labour abuses and exploitation within their organisations, currently much of it hidden. Importantly, the Modern Slavery Act of two thousand and fifteen gives the council the enforcement tools to fight slavery, servitude and forced labour. The first piece of legislation we have focusing on prevention and prosecution of modern slavery and so making sure that perpetrators are suitably punished and victims protected. The reach and significance of this motion however, is far greater than the council's local influence, procurement practice in supply chains. Much of the debate on slavery is clouded by outdated stereotypes from far away places and a lack of good intelligence on where, why and how it happens. If the council adopts the charter and regularly reports on company abuses and failures, it will play an important part in defining and highlighting this inequitable trade and the human rights abuses of people working within it or vulnerable to it. We know of Britain's long and dark history of involvement in the slave train, but we're often blind to the profound ethical issues that modern slavery now poses, e.g. it's the second largest criminal industry in the world and global profits from forced labour are around one hundred and twenty billion. The adoption of this charter will give the council a respected voice in the fight against the major crime of slavery worldwide. It will also put any ethical issues of exploitation where they belong within an economic framework. I have two questions for councillor Kemp. How will the requirements of the charter be fed into the council's wider ethical procurement practices and how can we as elected members help him and officers to implement the recommendations within it if it's passed tonight? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Very much, councillor Schofield. The guillotine has now fallen. I will take one more speaker and that's councillor Huddart and then councillor Kemp has the right.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm not displeased to see this motion coming up again, this issue, but I'm a bit mystified as to why it's coming up at this time and in this format. It was just a year ago and I had also been working, doing some charity work with trafficked people, which is why I prepared the motion for the city council. And if you remember, it was amended and watered down and it was deferred and deferred on several occasions. And then last summer, I went to a meeting at YHN, which as an enterprise, they had to meet their legislative requirements and had to publish their policy on modern day slavery, which they did last August. And as my motion had appeared several times here during, when it was deferred, I was amazed that at that YHN meeting, to hear councillor McCarthy say that she knew nothing about modern day slavery. So I thought, well, why did I bother and why did councillor Kilgawa bother to amend it? So what's changed in the past six months and why? I'd like to ask the proposal, why now? We have the same legislation, same guidelines, businesses have to publish their proposals, there's much greater awareness amongst the police and charities, there's more articles in newspapers and magazines, there's been more arrests made, the LGA and professional organisations and trade unions have all issued guidelines. So I said to councillor Kemp, why now? And I think the number of arrests plus the important work of the commissioner, Mr Highland, who I think is doing a good job, is testament to many of the positive moves in progress to address this problem. Unfortunately, despite the sterling work to identify those at risk and the gang masters and traffickers who exploit these people, and it's happening actively across Western Europe, even in places with strong legislation like the Nordic countries, Sweden, Denmark, etcetera, the UK is one of the few countries with a high level of legislation. It is a worldwide problem, my friend in America, her son works with these people who've been brought in from South America and yes, we have to remain vigilant and do more. And the forty-five days for recovery time is the minimum, it's not the maximum and it is an improvement on the previous fifteen days. So I'd like to suggest that if there are any further requests made for Newcastle to participate in any casework sharing, I'd suggest the police, because I know they're doing a great job in Newcastle, along with our multidisciplinary active inclusion team, they are doing a good job and that maybe my original suggestion for a policy cabinet would be a very useful idea to assess the nature of the problem in Newcastle and how it's being managed. Thank you.
Councillor Kemp, you have the right to reply.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Probably wasn't going to, however, the moral high ground adopted by councillor Huddart really just is reprehensible. I did think that we were sitting and bringing something forward that was actually agreeable. Why am I bringing it now? Because, could you please shut up and show some decency? Well, she's talking through me, David. No, David, she's talking through me, you are. We were asked to, I was asked to bring something, I brought something forward as a motion which I hope that the city council en masse, cross party would support. Sorry, David?
So you're the media, sir.
I'm sorry, I feel that this is something that the whole city and the city council would support. I think it is, something that's about compassion, it's about humanity and I think it's something that arguably, yes, we welcome now. The point that we raise in this motion, which was not brought previously, and the point which is an actual correction here, is this is about procurement and ensuring that our processes are in place. Now, forgive me if I'm entirely wrong, but I understand from memory that the motions that were brought before did not have references to the co-op party motion around procurement. This is specifically about ensuring that we set the precedent, that we ensure that our processes and procedures are in place, which is our moral responsibility and professional responsibility and that others will follow. And we are setting out the message which I think is our, is our role and responsibility as city leaders. I don't think there's anything, any issue here and I don't understand why people are sitting there and feeling it's a competition about who has the moral high ground. This is something that was brought to bring consensus. I don't bring things here to cause arguments, I bring things here to look at solutions. Now, with regards to the actual issue about the timing, you know, if not now, when?
Is the motion agreed or do we need to go to a vote? Agreed? Okay, thank you, everybody. That's the close of the meeting. Can I once again thank everybody that, that has served on the council over the last few years and won't be returning next year for whatever reason? The annual meeting will be on Wednesday, the twenty-third of May. My bucket is at the back for the very last time, if you would like to contribute to my charities and if you're feeling generous, I have left a postcard on all your seats regarding to the ball, which my son has been working very hard to get, different acts and different entertainment. And we've also delighted that the Northumberland University students are going to come along and give us a show of their fashion for this year. So if you could probably come, if you could possibly come, I'd be very grateful. Otherwise, enjoy the election, everybody.